Salary when your raises would come up, we need to set an evaluation time. It's got to be a real time in the past and we just set evaluations when he wanted to.
Okay.
And we would grab it. It should be done yearly and it should be done before the budget. Now, we are not doing it before the budget this time because, and you're new, okay? But I think if, my suggestion is that we do after the budget, we don't do it in March, but after that, that we do a review for so far and then set it up like, say, January, February of each year, before we do the budget and then, because that, it needs to be included. Okay, so there's my suggestion and I, you know, I don't know what anybody else thinks, but I, I, we need to get out, we have a form now that we like. Do we still have that on computer?
Yes, it should be on the end drive.
Okay, so we need to do an evaluation which is not a full year and then schedule the next one and then make sure we keep those consistent year after year after year, so we know that on this month, we're gonna do an evaluation for him, okay? Is that?
Is my understanding in my contract that I was to be reviewed in March before the budget, which you still have time to do? And then I was to be reevalu- evaluated again on the one year anniversary of my hire date, which was September 30th.
I think that's what we did, six months.
September 30th.
We would evaluate him in six months.
Correct.
Date and then, um, he would be evaluated on his anniversary date. And that's probably where we would discuss any raises, but if, if I remember, didn't you take less than we offered you?
Yes.
I did.
Yeah, and so that could be looked at in March also a little bit, you know? Um, is what I was thinking, he took considerably less than we offered him.
So do we need to have an evaluation before we do that? I mean, do we need to go into closed session or what do we need to do for that?
We could, I could give you the evaluation of the next board packet. We go to, and it's recommended to do negotiations in public session, so as we did for my contract. But it could be a part of the next, uh, board meeting. But it does make it difficult with the budget.
That's what I was thinking.
Yeah, and that's why, that, that's what bothers me.
That's a busy time.
When I was thinking that, um.
Would the, would the September time be better?
Anytime is whatever.
I know.
I, I would have to look at my contract, but I believe it said March was the first review.
Well, don't.
To look at salary.
Don't you, it was to look at salaries too?
Mm-hmm.
Well, then we need to do that before they.
Yeah, I think we need to do that.
Yep.
Don't hit him. He can't re, he can't watch.
Rewrite that and get that all set up again. Why can't we evaluate him in September on his date? And then, um, you know, maybe it's first year and the next budget, if he's gonna get a raise, he gets it then.
Well, my problem is if you put it in his contract.
If it's in the contract, then we have to do it.
I, I think we should, I would think you would want to be evaluated now to see how you're doing.
Absolutely.
To see what you expect from us, to see the little quirks that we don't care for and that we want you to switch.
Yeah.
And as far as the, um, wage thing, we could do at his year thing and compensate for what we didn't do from March till then. Or just having work in a small increase of two percent, two percent is nothing. Um, that's not going to adjust him.
At the very least, at the very least, we need to do an evaluation. In March, whether it has the pay increase or not, we, we, we have to have a progress report.
We do, because we have to tell them the things we want different. We have to keep on top of that, which we didn't do before.
Right.
Well, not that there's anything terrible we want, but.
No, but it's part of the process.
We need to keep on top of that stuff.
Yeah.
To refresh my memory, what did we offer you and what did you take?
It started at sixty and then there was discussion on, uh, it was too high. And someone suggested fifty-five.
Didn't you go right in the middle?
And so I split in the middle at fifty-seven, five.
Okay, so two percent of fifty-seven, five would be a thousand and something.
It would be about fifty-eight something.
Still wouldn't get him to sixty.
What if he just took the two percent right now? Cause he could work that in right now, that's not that much. And we're still evaluating.
Yeah, we still have to evaluate.
Yeah.
I, I mean.
I mean, I don't, I, I personally don't see anything here we're going to get rid of him for, so.
No, and I'm fine with the pay.
Yeah.
I, I am perfectly fine personally, I think that.
He deserves a raise like everybody else gets the raise.
Yeah.
And, um, the other ones are called adjustments.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
And can be done later, anytime.
Yeah.
So that when we evaluate him in September, then we would.
Still do one in March.
Well, we would set for whatever he's gonna make the next year from then on or whatever, and then he can get the two percent everybody gets on. I don't know, we'll decide then what we wanna do.
Are you okay with me putting the evaluation in next month's?
Yeah. Do you wanna do them publicly? You wanna do it publicly?
I, I don't want to, but it's, I'm okay either way.
You can do the evali- you can do the evaluation in a closed session.
Yep.
We, you can't just discuss his pay in a closed session.
But his, his pay gets discussed out here, right?
Correct.
But the evaluation doesn't.
If you wanna do, I personally don't have the issues that I had previously where I said we need to go into closed session because I had to say some things that I really didn't wanna say publicly. So I don't have, I personally don't have any of those, right? So if you wanna do it publicly, we can do it publicly.
Okay.
Uh, but if you don't.
But don't you wanna do it privately?
Well.
You would rather do it privately.
You're still gonna feel, you're still gonna feel like we're ripping you to shreds, but we're really not, okay?
Well, my, my fear being that someone here with.
Oh, we can do a closing.
I know, I mean, I think as, as far as time line.
Yes, I think, I think you're right, June, it should be in a closed session.
Let's just do it, yeah.
My fear is how I'm often misquoted in the local paper sometimes and my fear would be.
We all are.
Well, right, that, my only fear would be that they would run with that or twist words and.
Right.
You know, I, every Sunday, I'm like, I didn't say that, and I'm like, oh, should've turned my mic off or, that was a joke, but.
That she doesn't understand jokes.
Do you have a motion at this time to give him the two percent?
I'll make the motion.
I'll support.
All those in favor? Do we have to call them? All those in favor?
Alright. So work that into the budget.
Work with two percent in.
Motion's carried.
And we'll do evaluation in March.
And then we're gonna.
He's gonna give us the evaluation thing and we'll do it.
And we'll have it ready for the next meeting for the March.
You want me to email the form to you tomorrow?
Yes.
And we'll put it in on the agenda as closed session towards the end, if that's all right.
Mail that one.
Yeah.
My printer's not working.
Okay, okay.
Can I have a paper copy also?
Have the police officer drop it off.
I'll print them off tonight.
I can print them off tonight and this two percent.
That would be, that would be, work really well.
Yep, yep, I can print it off as soon as we're done and then give it to everybody. For the beginning of the year, like everybody else's two percent.
The, uh, uh.
It's across the board.
Okay, uh, the fiscal.
Yep, fiscal year.
Um, that would be April 1st. Okay. I would like to see what that means.
Are, are all minor issues taken care of now?
No, no.
There's no skating thing, I thought I said the fifty-five. So I just think that two percent's pretty.
I know, they're gonna be everywhere.
Yeah, that is, um.
Yeah, and then we'll evaluate.
They can get, well, he's not gonna get a raise.
Yeah, we can?
Yeah.
Yeah, but you can give, you can give him a raise whenever you want to, it doesn't have to be at some time. He's the manager, so.
So how does that fit in the budget?
Yeah, how can we do that with the budget?
You just have to make it.
We made other things fit that didn't.
Okay.
Yeah, there's a lot.
If I know him, like I think I know him, he's got a padded budget sitting over there in front of him and he's got.
I hope so.
I'm just telling you, I could find that sixty immediately.
Good manager, was that?
Yeah.
Any good manager can come up with extra money for themselves and always purpose.
Anytime.
On your latest.
It's really great.
On your latest email, you were talking about the park concession stand.
Yes.
What's the difference between a yearly, um.
Permit?
Permit and an annual one?
So I'd have to look at the numbers, the, the yearly is, is a one time, I think it's a thousand dollars, roughly a thousand dollars one time. So it's good perpetually, whereas yearly, you have to pay, I think it's between six hundred and eight hundred every single year.
So, so, so what's the difference between yearly and annual is the same thing? Right?
Okay, the, the yearly, the, the, okay. Every year they have to apply for this because they don't have the enclosed concession stand, they can't serve hot food. Um, they have to apply every year for six.
Words from the food people.
Six to eight hundred dollars for a one-year permit.
Okay.
An annual permit, which would be good for every year rolling over perpetually, is about a thousand dollars.
So that covers every year coming up?
Yes, so they would, would be able to cook hot food. Uh, if any other entity wanted to use the concession stand for a fundraiser, if we wanted to serve hot dogs there and sell them at movie night in the park, we would already have the permit.
But we still have to be inspected once?
Correct, and they are offering to pay the, the inspection, which is, I believe, eight hundred and fifty-eight dollars or something.
Now, cause I thought yearly and annual is the same thing.
Yeah, I see the confusion, that's my fault.
And, um, that, and also on the M-Dog grant? With the, for the two hundred and fifty dollar match?
Yeah, two hundred and fifty thousand.
Well, yeah, okay, I'd never add thousands on there. Okay, um, just assume, well, because look at what we're dealing with, um. Did we approve that before you did it?
No, I have, I, we, it's not open to apply yet, so I was ready to apply with John from Spicer and got everything ready and he's like, oh, Hart, they're, they're not open yet, so I was a little ahead of myself.
You do know that you have to run something like that by us first?
Yes.
Cause you're gonna be really embarrassed if you apply for a grant and we go, we're not spending that money. Okay.
Understand completely.
You don't want the grant.
Especially a match like that.
Yeah, it's, it's not.
You come up with something that a match is five hundred, go for it. But two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, we have to see it first.
Yep, it, it's not open yet, so.
Okay.
And that's not picking you apart?
No, that's fair.
This is gun shy people.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's a lot of money as well.
Cause I mentioned that to you too.
Right.
And so did you see where he spent two hundred and fifty thousand dollars? Oh, he asked me else, but, um, I understand now.
Okay, those are my issues, Mr. Chairman.
Budget's all yours. He's reading his phone.
Well, I'm looking for John's email.
Cause he's got it all on his phone, we're just old people that have this.
So this is your proposed twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one budget. It's not flashy, it is conservative, I am cheaper than Chris. I'm very frugal.
You're cheaper than Chris, huh?
I'm cheaper than Chris.
Wow.
I didn't believe that existed.
I didn't either.
I didn't think that.
Well, Chris.
These are numbers based on state documents, uh, budget protection, uh, projections from the county. For instance, on the, uh, personal property tax replacement, I have a revenue of eighty-two thousand dollars.
Now, where, where are you?
What page are you on?
I'm on page one, on the personal property tax replacement, um, one-on-one, zero-zero-zero, four-zero, zero-zero-one. It'll actually be closer to eighty-two thousand dollars, but that's how soft I am, just giving us a little fluff.
It'll be closer to what, eighty-two thousand?
About eighty-two thousand dollars, so.
Did they reduce that? Did I ask you this already?
It's gonna reduce every year as it phases out.
I was gonna say, cause you got ninety-five already this year.
Yep.
And you think it's gonna be reduced more, right?
Yep, they, they're phasing it out. This is their replacement for the businesses who have to pay tax on their equipment, they, they already purchased and paid tax on. It was, it was during the manufacturing, well, so, you know, Michigan Cat wasn't selling anything, people started buying Cat again, but they couldn't afford the taxes every year on equipment they've already purchased. So this is a way for, the legislature decided to try to help businesses get off their feet after two thousand and ten.
So we're looking at dropping, dropping, dropping though for that, so that's gonna be a problem for us.
Correct.
Yeah, underneath that same section, refuge, a refuse collection, I'm not talking very good today. It's, uh, way down, uh, did our, did that go down for us?
I have it at a hundred and eleven thousand.
Alright.
Um, previous years, it was a hundred and twenty-five, but the actual to date, uh, is about a hundred and eleven thousand, eight hundred and thirty-four dollars. So I, I took soft conservative numbers, I'm not going to.
Really, cause it says here that the one twenty-four-two is what we've already collected. Didn't that go down because we went with a different company?
Yes.
Isn't that why it went down?
Yes.
Okay.
That was what I was wondering, is that because of the different company or what is that?
It's because of the different company.
Yes. But with her, I am concerned, I don't, I told you in that email that they sold off at the end of last year. So I don't know what's gonna happen.
And also undesigned needed fund balance down at the bottom, what is that?
Those are reserves.
So that's just our cash?
Correct. And that, that would be for the asphalt.
It's for the street, right?
The streets on Hosmer and Fulton. And that, if you recall, that contract was a guest of a hundred and sixty-five thousand. So I, I went over hoping that, um, just the coverage, contract change orders, anything that they wanna do or if we end up, uh, working with Union Court on sidewalks or their little parking spot on the other side.
And that's a local street?
Correct.
Okay, and you did away with community promotion?
Yes, we have that in the DDA fund, um, for things like the Christmas and whatnot, and I, I added money in there. But I, I, we don't spend a lot of money on community promotion.
Well, that can get misused as we have seen.
And, I mean, other than the sign, which I wanted to talk to you about, the, the time was off probably four minutes as well.
I always used to question that and got great big, great big flowery answers. But I always wanted zero, awesome.
Yeah.
Is the, now this is jumping ahead a little bit, but isn't the street we're gonna do over at Union Court a local street?
I think Fulton's a ma- no, I think they're major.
Are they major?
I think they're from our major actually.
Really? Then I'm looking in the wrong place.
Well, we'll get there.
I believe both Hosmer and Fulton are major streets. If I recall correctly, both of them.
Oh, okay, here's the transfer from General in Major, so it must be a major street.
I think they both.
I think they both are.
Okay. Okay. I just couldn't find something.
On page two, I know, I'd like a double up on health insurance there. At one seventy office, health insurance?
Yes.
How, okay, what was that?
The, the fourteen thousand fifty?
Yeah.
Our health insurance has gone up over fourteen percent.
And aren't you now charging everybody out to where they work? Did you tell me that?
That I?
That you're charging out their health insurance to where they work?
Um, uh.
No.
I'm doing that with their pensions and, and their OPEB. Uh, the auditing, auditing company wanted to see where the liability lies, especially for police.
Okay, so everybody else you're still spreading out over?
Correct, we're still fund reallocation for.
See, you can kinda put those wherever you want, wherever it works.
Okay.
So whatever works better for the budget is kinda where you stick those things in that.
I noticed too, we have like Department four eighty-five and this is just an ongoing thing through it, uh, down on the bottom of page three. Yeah, the transfer, yeah, that same department listed as transfers in several different places in here. Is that, is that what's happening here and that, I had that question, is just filled out to different areas?
Correct, it's uniform, based on the treasury sends out monthly now, uniform chart of accounts on how you're supposed to label number so that they can trace everything.
So every, um, wage will be a seven oh two account within its department. Just like all of these transfers, they're all gonna be that in every fund, they're all gonna be four eighty-five. Department four eighty-five's in every account we have, you know, major, local, water store.
That is so difficult.
It's a lot easier, it used to be a different way and it was awful.
Depends on what you're writing a budget or looking at.
I know, and to me, it's like, oh.
It's a lot easier than it used to be because everything had different numbers and nothing was uniform and they may just go to the uniform accounting code about twenty years ago, so.
So that would, on page two, that would account for why we don't have any figures for the clerk or the treasurer. We just have a, an amount there, right?
Correct, so I rebuilt that and actually added the count of codes and the names because they didn't have wages, uh, they, in the previous budget of years. If you look.
Right, well, they had nothing previous, but.
It's really different.
They only had contracted, contractual services under the clerk and the treasurer, you had supplies and miscellaneous. So in order for the accounting firm to see what, or ensure the public too, that they do get a wage, they do pay, you know, federal income tax, they do have health insurance, they do have a pension, they do have healthcare and kinda show people what, what we spend on them. Obviously, we, a percentage of it is, you know, throughout the accounts, but, uh, there was nothing. So I had to go through a uniform chart of accounts to rebuild that and make sure those are all in line with the one-on-one, two fifteen, seven fifteen, seven nineteen, seven twenty, seven twenty-five, seven thirty-five, based on state regulation.
Okay, well, I guess, and these are probably just piddly questions, but I like to know what I'm.
I don't know, but from the red pen marks, you really went over yours.
I guess.
Got a lot of them red pens.
Gosh darn it, Chris.
On page two, um, for the computer supplies, uh, under the one-on-one, one seventy, at the top for the seven thousand five hundred dollars. That is for a new copy machine, as I mentioned in the email.
Okay.
We are getting a, a better copier, a new copier, we bought this one used, we're getting brand new for the same price that we got the old used one for.
Okay.
And then our service to have them fix it up and work on it is fifteen dollars a month, which is cheaper than what we pay now.
See, I didn't question that because I thought that was understandable, uh, for in my world, right? Yeah, we have to stay in his world. Down on village halls and grounds, you have repairs and maintenance for twenty thousand down.
That wouldn't be capital outlay?
Well, I was gonna use it for a parking lot and, uh, out front for our flowers.
But I mean, I know, but isn't, isn't buying a computer capital outlay?
Oh, it could be, but I use it in computer supply, uh, supplies because we're getting rid of the old one.
Okay.
I could move that down to capital outlay if, if this porch would be first.
Just wanna know what it is?
Yep, yep.
I trust you people in the bookkeeping because I don't know what, if that, if I had to do that, we'd be arrested, that's, you know, that's all I have to say. And we have, uh, over on page three, we have equipment rental, um, down, two up from the bottom on that section at thirty-one thousand. And what would that be that we would rent? Is that for you?
I would assume so.
Yes, that's Dunn's money.
That's for Dunn.
Oh, alright.
That's the village's money.
It all goes into Dunn's special account though.
I wish.
The purchase account.
Now, you're billing in pension plan with, like, the police department that gets billed in there too, right?
Correct, and that way we show where our liability is, I believe we have three retired police officers currently receiving a pension. And they, they're all in the B, B two or B four system, which is the most expensive with the cost of living increase.
See, I thought that's what it was, but I needed to mention it.
Previously, there was a whole fund for MERS and OPEB and our auditors explained to the previous administration that that's not a good idea, it doesn't fit any accounts, it doesn't fit any charts, please don't do it, they did it anyway. And so when I first arrived, I called Darcy and said, what, let's look at this budget, what do you think is a waste? What do you think is, I don't wanna get accused of anything, I don't want anything to not look appropriate, what would you suggest? And that was one of her suggestions.
Good. I notice down here at the bottom, do refuse collection, then we have contracted services for a hundred and thirty-seven thousand again. I guess, you know, we had it back someplace else before.
It'll be in every department.
So it'll be in every department?
Could have been.
How much do we pay a year for garbage collection?
Oh, that's not garbage collection, contracted services.
No, down here, down here, refuse collection, Department five twenty-five.
Oh, that's their own, that's us paying out to them, that's how much we pay them a year right there.
Is that what we pay them a year?
Minus dumpster, a hundred and thirty-seven thousand, right?
Yeah.
Why was it only ninety-one last year?
It's not done yet.
Alright, okay.
That, I think that rose as a twelve thirty-one.
I know I appear to be a pain on this stuff, I work for a lawyer and I'm gonna tell you what, you put something down on a piece of paper and it shows up in a courtroom and you have to explain what it is, right?
Right.
So I do pick that stuff apart.
Well, my question then, because I'm listening to her, is how come the cost is not the same as the income?
For?
We're only taking in a hundred and eleven thousand dollars for refuse, spending a hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars.
We are subsidizing a little bit of our services.
A little bit?
Yeah. You, I, I can get those closer in line, um, try to be more accurate.
Shouldn't we be charging the customer what it costs us to have it picked up?
I think we are under, we, obviously, I think per household, we're probably under, I wanna say fourteen dollars per household.
I don't think we should be.
I agree. I, I agree.
I don't think we should be, I think we should charge them exactly what it costs to pick up that garbage.
Well, I, you, I have to agree with you.
Yep.
You know, and I mean, I know mine's gonna go up, but I have to, I mean, if they're gonna charge, if you're gonna charge me tenants, they're gonna charge you fourteen dollars.
You're losing money.
That doesn't even make any sense to me.
No.
You know, I can't, I can't justify that.
I don't know when they stopped doing that, but we always charged exactly what they told us to charge to make up for what we're gonna pay out.
We can do that.
I don't know who changed that or when.
I agree with you, I, if we're.
Do you remember, you weren't here, Jim, weren't you, you wouldn't have been here.
Well, Jim was at every meeting for the last hundred years, ain't you, Jim?
Yeah, but I don't, I don't remember that.
Yeah, he doesn't remember that.
One out there.
He's either here or there. Yeah, it has nothing to do with the chickens, so you wouldn't have paid any attention.
Well, I think you did, I think you paid more attention.
Well, actually, the first, the first three, four months was I was trying to figure out, because of the chickens, how everything ran, and then that's when I got interested and started listening to everything else, so.
Well, I think we're gonna have to look at raising the garbage rates to what it's supposed to be.
I don't have a problem with that.
I agree.
Yeah.
Yeah, we gotta, you know, keep on.
You can't take that big of a loss.
No.
What really bothers me is how unstable the financial situation is right now and how flaky the state government is, you know, bothers me. What it is, we're gonna have to pick up all the, all over the place. Where is it gonna come from?
Well, this is gonna make them really blow out of the water when they get their next water bill, but.
But it's not on the water bill, is it, it's on the taxes.
Oh, that's right, it's hidden in the taxes, it's okay.
And who was the village manager here?
I did that, I put it on the taxes.
Yes, I know. I remember.
That's our, that's.
I don't say I don't remember seeing them in my last water bill.
It's not, it hasn't been there for years.
It's got it today.
Hundred thirty-seven thousand.
Yes, yes.
What, your newest segment?
Right here, yeah.
Little water bill.
Oh, yeah, I got mine the other day too, I was like, ooh. Oh, that's lower.
Yeah, that doesn't need to change the budget though, does it, Chris?
Yeah.
It does?
He's gotta change the income in general.
Okay.
So that they match what's coming in is going out. It'd be different if it was the other one.
Right.
But Hart, it needs to be whatever they told you, the cost is, cause it may not be the same as that. Something to do with resale and all that stuff.
It looks like it's.
Yeah, on that paper they give you, this is what you should be charging this year for your garbage.
I'm gonna make sure I've got the right number of it's. So yeah, the estimated cost per household is a hundred and seventy-five dollars and fifty cents.
A year.
Per household.
So you'd raise that up to?
What did you say that word?
Hundred eighty cents?
One seventy-five fifty.
It's gonna show up on the taxes. I think it's, is it in the one forties now?
Yeah.
It is, and that's where we're losing.
Yeah.
We're losing.
So that, okay.
Well, we need to fix that.
One sixty something.
Yeah, it's one sixty something.
Okay, we'll need to.
It's about fourteen dollars and something.
Should we take a vote on that?
To be safe?
Uh, I, essentially, this is my.
It's what we're supposed to do, isn't it?
Essentially, I would just say by changing it in the budget, you're going to vote on the budget.
And a penny.
Yeah, let's do that, just do a one vote.
That's right. Okay, so change that. They'll give you more money than you can generally.
Almost enough for a kayak round.
Yeah. Or a boat launch. Or a rough on a hot dog stand.
Alright, that's enough.
On page four, I have.
I said, well, shoot, while we're changing things, let's give Jimmy's chicken.
Farmers market place, there's been a lot of discussion and we shouldn't be doing anything on that.
Yes, that is, uh, I asked in an email what you wanted to do about the farmer's market. And, uh, there's no way to really track usage or how many people, but we did see an uptick in the lower income people and elderly using the services.
Now, the farmer's market, I don't have a problem with a little subsidy there to help them out.
That's not.
I didn't either, I didn't like three thousand though.
No, no, but I don't have a problem, I, I like it to keep going and if it gets to the point where they're relying only. No, no, but I don't have a problem. I, I like it to keep going, and if it gets to the point where they're relying only on it, we need to reevaluate.
I agree, and I, I would like to see some personal onus or.
Yeah.
Private sector, um, participation, and if they're just using.
It'll pick up.
If they're just using our machine to swipe, then ideally, that's what I would like. Yeah, yeah, pick it up. We'll bring it to you.
Yeah.
Do they keep track then, or do you keep track of the, the sliding stuff?
Um, Shelley takes the machine down there and she takes care of all that, and then the backend with the processing. Marguerite puts it in when she gets like the bank rec, and I handle all the, the coupons and the, the tokens and stuff like that.
So there's like a check and balance thing going on?
Yeah, okay, yep.
What I wanted was Matt out of it and Deanna out of it.
Right.
That's my one. Because we were paying them to be over there.
Well, I mean, that's, I don't wanna pay somebody to run it and then donate a subsidy.
Money we were paying him.
Yeah.
You know?
People gripped about that because, you know, our.
I think we should keep subsidizing it.
People would get furious.
Yeah, I am. Yeah, he's, because it's not very much money, but I mean, we did discuss.
Well, maybe we should only have four day-a-week management here. They really were mad.
Now, my other thing on this page is my personal gripe that everybody's aware of on the planning commission. There's nothing allotted for the ordinance redo. Now, I know you're looking into money for that.
I did budget five thousand for that. I can move it to the, uh, the contracted, contracted services, uh, so that would show up.
Where do you have it?
I have it under the DDA because I was hoping for the MEDC, the Michigan Economic Development Corporation, as part of the, of the redevelopment-ready communities. Where we could be, apply for them to pay for seventy-five percent of that, up to thirty thousand dollars. Uh, we should know this next month, actually, and so I was gonna put the five there where I, it's listed in, let me go to it.
Back here further in the DDA?
It's in the DDA. It's, um.
What page you're going to?
I'm going to. It looks like it should be on page eight, and it's the capital outlay for the DDA appropriations. Where it's fifteen thousand dollars. Ten of that is for the facade grant program. The other five was going to be for our contribution towards the planning.
Now, where am I saying this?
It's okay for them to do that?
Well, they fall under economic develop, uh, economic development, downtown development. It's, I mean, this partnership for them.
Okay.
It might be a creative way of looking at it, if you.
I like creative ways of looking at it.
Yeah, I know, okay.
Okay, so it is in here.
Yes.
It's just not right there.
There's five, hoping that they would, they would contribute the other fifteen.
We, we have inherited, and that was not what was sent out, but we haven't, we got back this unholy mess. And I'm sure that any professional planner that we get in here will say, you guess, what did your people do, right? And Dennis Collison, when he left, you know, you were here, and he was talking about problems with those ordinances, and they're huge. So, I mean, the planning commission has historically done that. That's one of the things that we've done, and I was there when we did it the last time. Chris was there for one big redo, and she recognizes many of the things we talked about previously before that were gone.
Yeah.
And that can't, to me, we have to redo that. That's important. So thank you very much, and that's my, my big gripe.
Well, and I, as I mentioned, I did reach out to Pete Preston from Preston Community Services, who is a professional planner in mid-Michigan. I think he has a home office out of Langsberg, uh, but I worked with Pete in Chilwasi County, and he's a real professional, and he's seen it all and done it all.
Okay.
Uh, we were going through the wind turbine mess, and he had done it in five or six other communities up in Alma's area, and he really was a, a good guiding light for me. To save me politically as well as the information I needed to, you know, sound educated on the matter, to know what I was talking about.
So how much does he cost for a review?
I have, he hasn't gotten back to me yet.
Not gonna be cheap.
I know, yeah, I know.
I sent him the documents.
We did, we did cheap. It doesn't.
So this would have been probably two week, two, two weeks ago, I sent him all our documents, and he's reviewing them on his own time for free. To see what it would cost and see what we're looking, working with.
Because we did it the cheap, like she, like Chris said, we did it cheap, and it, this is what we have, and we don't, uh, it needs to be cleaned up.
And, and when Dennis was in last week, I mentioned two names of people around here that, I've heard these two names were playing, and he, he shot both of them down.
Okay.
So that's why I went to Pete.
He didn't throw spices.
We used a local for the.
He didn't. He, he didn't. He did, he did it for three other things, but not that.
Okay, not that.
Yeah.
We used a local for the park plan, and it wasn't.
Steve Collins, who did not come to our last meeting.
Okay.
Deanna Soto and, um.
Phillips is.
Phillips has it.
Phillips is still there?
And I cautioned, we're not on being recorded, I cautioned Hart about. The person that is so troublesome on that commission, right? And she was well-behaved.
Oh, she always says when you tell somebody she's not gonna be.
I told him, check it, I don't want him to listen to me only because Dennis like gossip, but I said, check out that thing with other people because. Yeah, but anyway, she was very well behaved, so that worked out okay.
Must have been tired.
Something. Okay.
Uh, page, let's see, it's on four.
We are not being recorded.
I'm not on. Are you recording us?
I'm supposed to.
Are you?
There's no one mind.
It'll pick up anything in the room.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
Oh.
Oh dear.
On, on page four, uh, for estimated revenues.
Yes, she does.
On the state shared revenue act fifty-one, I have two hundred and two thousand dollars.
What page are we on?
On page four, um, act fifty-one, on the estimated revenues, I have two hundred and two thousand. They came out with new projections last week, and that could be potentially four thousand to eleven thousand more.
Oh, that's nice.
So I, I left it as is.
Okay, alright.
Um, but that's something that I think we'll see extra dollars there, both in, that's in, um, the major street fund and the local street fund. So I, the local, I believe I budgeted, uh, eighty-three thousand. I think we could see about eighty-seven, eighty-eight there, ninety-two if we got lucky.
Okay.
But, so another soft numbers where I went under and low and tried to work with what we have, and, uh, I think we will see higher revenues than that.
Well, you know, if, if we happen to get more, we can just transfer less out of general.
Yeah.
You know.
What you got on page five, Diane?
Well, I, I think I do what it is. Uh, construction, uh, department four fifty-one. What project would that be on page five?
That is.
That's a unique work.
Let me look to see if I have it. I think that's the, the Fulton, or the Fulton Hosmer.
Okay, because I thought that's what it was, but I didn't.
But, I do believe. That.
Sorry, I have to keep listening to my stomach make these crazy noises all night. It's just really ripping.
Sorry.
Let's just, let's just say we didn't hear it. You're fine. Yeah, so I have that for the, uh, Hosmer Fulton.
Okay.
Do they really?
It's your grandson. Yeah.
Really? I didn't know that.
It's probably your grandson doing it right now.
Is it just a test then?
Hope so.
What's today? Today Monday?
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, they're off and working on stuff, evidently.
Everything's broke right now, so.
Oh, good. Glad you know that.
So that's all.
Grandpa's gonna want more money, huh?
That is all Zach has been doing lately.
Well, it's all, the only thing I have questions for, because I got some of it explained.
Okay.
Okay.
So you're done with page five?
I'm done with page five.
Alright.
Page six.
Yay. What you got on page six?
They have been answered, basically.
Well, you got red down here, though.
I, Bill, because he's.
Oh, you already. Yay, okay. Page seven.
So we're not at the point where we can transfer more money yet from local to major? We're still working on that? Where we're allowed to take more over if we want to? Or did you not have the need to put more over there this year?
I, I didn't.
Okay.
Need, needwise, but, um.
Sometimes it might be good to put some over there anyway and just keep it in there.
Yeah. I, I definitely didn't.
What's it thought?
Didn't put a ton.
Well, you put the same thing as kinda last year.
Yeah, I, I went a little bit less.
Well, that's okay, because Major Street's making a big expenditure. Yeah, this works better. Never mind.
Looking at what page?
And.
I'm on, uh, local streets. I've gone from major streets to local streets. You're there.
Okay.
I'm looking here at how much he transferred over.
When you say the majority of roads are major.
Because Major spent so much, you probably shouldn't.
Uh, Major's yellow and.
Yeah.
Locals white.
GIS, yeah. I don't know what the percentages are.
I'd like to see that.
I'm sure they're less than half.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
You know what the percentage is normally?
But I know there's a lot more local than there are major.
And there's no rhyme or rhythm.
No, it's.
There isn't, not really. I mean.
I mean, you can.
If it goes out of town, straight out of town, it's, sometimes mostly it's a major.
South Saginaw is not all major, though.
No.
There's a chunk in there that isn't.
Well, in South Saginaw, the downtown district, we traded for Charles Street because we wanted to pave start Charles Street, so we made that a local street. Maybe we should trade it back now.
Does it matter here?
Only when you're looking for money to pay for it. And the contracted services in local street is to repair stuff you don't wanna repair. What is that for? I mean, I understand contracted services in water and sewer. That's to do stuff that we can't do.
In routine maintenance, is that what you're talking about?
Yeah.
That's, that's when Don comes to me and asks for money, and I don't wanna give it to him.
Okay.
But I guess I don't, what we would, other than paving.
We could move that to the equipment rental.
What was spent last year, I guess, in contractual services? Does it show that in the budget or?
Yeah, we spent sixty-three ninety-four, but I don't know on what. Jenny could tell us that. She'd have to go look.
I could look it up.
Hmm, I'm trying to think. Routine maintenance, contracted services.
It might have been something with Spicer.
It would have been by asset management, these streets.
It might have been.
Oh, maybe.
Yeah.
Because we, Matt was having me split it between major and local.
Okay.
That's probably what it was.
That's probably what it is.
Yeah, because we haven't contracted any work out.
No.
Nope. We could put it, put it towards the eleven thousand we owe them for looking at our asphalt.
I have a, just a quick question when we get to the Village Street Millage Fund. When, when we.
That's on page.
It's right next to it, yeah. Yeah, um, when you were talking about that grant, are you thinking of taking the money out of there and doubling it? I mean, if we could put two fifty in and get five hundred out.
Yes.
Would we use, is that the money you're thinking of using to?
Okay, correct. So it'd either be that for bonding?
By then, yeah.
Or it would be.
Well, we could still bond.
We could still bond.
Even after you do that, it's still gonna get seventy.
It'll be close.
What is it getting? Eighty-three thousand dollars a year?
Correct.
It's gotta make the payments on some big bond.
Yeah.
And it would still be coming in every year.
Yeah, so year-to-date.
I thought I had put my estimated stuff in.
So we're, we're at about eighty, a little under eighty-three thousand right now. So with another.
Total?
Yeah.
No, there's more than that.
No, to bring, bring it in yearly, year-to-date.
Okay.
So we're a little under eighty-three, so we have a couple weeks, so let's just say we hit eighty-four, five, or eighty-five. So that would move that fund to, I believe, two hundred and seventy thousand.
There you go.
Sitting there.
Then you'd have the matching funds.
You'd have the matching funds if we were to get the grant, if it was approved by the board. Or, and then we could use the remaining towards bonding. I did reach out to Russ Taylor today. Mr. Collison thought that he might have a, two different connections at the city of Saginaw that might be able to get us a water contract.
Okay. Russ is really nice. There's, I don't, there's not many more left that I used to know. We're all.
Those, those, that would be the fund I was discussing, yes.
Yeah, except for, um, is Mark McGill still at Tidibowasi Township? Because he used to be the controller at Saginaw.
I know they hired him a few years ago.
They did. If he's out there, he'd know a lot too.
Okay. Can you say the last name again?
McGill, M-C-G-I-L-L.
Thank you.
You start. You stop looking. Oh, never mind.
Yeah, you aren't being recorded.
We must remember.
But he is very bright. He's, he's good at what he does.
Move to page eight. Wish everyone's okay with that.
On page seven, the estimate, okay, under estimated revenues, department zero, 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 it's underneath, um, Village Street Fund.
The DDAs?
Okay, down here, we had, no, they have the construction.
Oh, the boatworks, okay.
Okay, construction. That eighty-three, seven fifty, is that part of, in there, the Hosmer Street? What is this, um?
You're up in construction.
Our, our Village Street Millage?
It's underneath that.
Estimated revenues?
No.
In construction, appropriations.
Construction, appropriations.
Right here.
Okay.
This is the money we get for streets.
Right.
So that.
That's how much we get from that millage that's almost taxes.
Okay, so there's nothing on construction. This is just contracted services then.
Well, it's called.
Construction.
It's called Village Street Millage.
Right, but what's this down here?
Revenues.
And this is the expenditures.
These are the expenses. There shouldn't be any expenses in there.
It, it's just to, if we wanted to use it, if we wanted to use it, we could put it down to increase the fund equity one, one level down and still zero it out. And that would put it into the bank. Or, I guess that fund would, would be about two eighty-three.
Here, this one fund.
Two eighty-five.
Okay, and so he's taking it and putting it here. I'm not sure why.
Originally, I was using that for streets, and then I met with Chris, and she said, just pay for it out of general fund.
So you need to take that out of there.
Yeah, so I can put it right back into, increase the fund equity and build that fund, and that'll put us at two eighty-five out in that. So we'll put that down to increase the fund equity.
Yep. We'll just take it in and it'll just stay in there.
Right there.
Okay.
Same with boatworks, down below.
Same with boatworks?
Yeah, we're just taking the interest income in that, not using anything from it.
Right, right. Well, that'll change your expenditures too. If you left that in there and moved the other over, you doubled something.
Are you looking at boatworks?
Mm-mm.
Are you looking at the?
I'm still talking about the street stuff. I'm still talking about the street stuff.
Well, I would just move it down to increase the fund equity, that would zero that out still. It would just add the money to the account. The formula in the Excel would still, all the numbers would be all right.
Oh, okay, I've never seen an increase to fund equity before.
Yeah, that's one of those that I.
Must be a new one.
I added in, based on the state.
Okay. That works.
Uniform chart of accounts.
Yep, just put it down there.
I can do that.
I did have a question where, where you talked in, on your initial cover letter, um, which brings that up.
Yeah.
Uh, that this budget takes, also takes auditors' suggestions in cleaning up the unnecessary counts and all, you know, the auditor would always say he recommended certain things. And so I'm wondering exactly what all that was, it's just all these changes in here?
Correct, both additions to, for instance, the clerk and the treasurer, to removing the L, L D F A accounts, to removing the merge, removing the pension. And then adding Act fifty-one, but throwing in different line items or charts of that to show, because we have to show the state that we are using those funds, not less than one percent per year. And so, uh, those are some of the recommendations. So I rebuilt everything in Excel.
Oh, my God.
When I first got here.
He's a worker, is he not?
So we're from there to here. The other things the auditors do is they take everything from one year to the other and jiggle them around, so that everything is in the right year, from March to April. So they'll give her a bunch of journal entries to move that money around and get it where it belongs, which is a real pain in the butt, to try to figure out what goes where.
We've, we've been working on that, we've projected twice now, just on new numbers every week, so that come the end of March and beginning of April, that we're good to go.
They'll still find all the mistakes.
Yeah.
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 You'll quit trying to do that. But give it a shot.
Keep up the good work, though.
The expenses under D D A, this is on page eight.
Yes.
Uh, nearly doubled, um, close to doubling there, from last year to this year, and what, what is that, what am I seeing there?
Where?
This is page eight.
Yep.
Under appropriations, and I think this is all about D D A.
Yes.
Okay, down, last year, uh, total expenses were fifty-three thousand plus, and you have it up to a hundred and thirty?
Yes, we, we've added money for contraction services, I've added money for winter maintenance and sidewalk, uh, plowing, I've added money for postage, uh, out of here.
We're charging them more.
We are, um, I've even discussed and thought about adding some, uh, costs to having business checks, routine business checks for D D A. To help pay some of the overtime wages for our police. They want to feel safe, they wanna, you know, I've heard.
They want the door checks, they want all that stuff.
They want the benefit. Yep, they want that, so, you know, if we run into trouble with overtime pay, that's where it's coming from. Uh, many other municipalities do it, city of Saginaw has an agreement with their D D A for their police to check, and I think that's a, something we should probably follow suit if they want the, the benefit.
Our police actually love it, busy that they can't make door checks?
One of them is, is, is doing it very, very well.
Very busy.
Um, in fact, she's working on others who only show up once a month, uh, on, these are the homes that we do welfare checks on, they're in Florida, whatever. Well, I didn't know we even had those, well, yeah. And so they started yesterday, she's like, it's something easy we can do, we can show them our daily reports, we can show that we're, we're held accountable. And it's another way to look good in the community, so, just in the one week that we've kind of been with her.
By, by door checks, so you, are you talking about the storefront needs?
We're doing both, business and homes.
The, the one that you're talking about charging the D D A for?
Oh, we, we would check them all, I mean, that's something we should be doing routinely.
I'm just asking, I'm just asking.
No, but you gotta remember that the D D A never existed at one time, and now it does.
I remember.
And what it gets is taxes that should be ours, and now it goes to them. So now they can pay for the stuff that we used to pay for. They can pay for their own stuff now because they have our money to play with.
Yep.
So it just makes sense that we charge them for whatever we can to get the money back.
I would just wonder if they were separated, the storefronts and the household.
They, they do, yes, yes.
We don't charge the house people for anything.
No, no, that's free, but that's something that we need to get in.
They don't take any of our tax dollars either, so.
That's something we need to get into the pandemic.
And then, did you know that they send out, they used to send out letters when, like, um, if you would turn in a thing and you were gonna be gone for three months? And they check, and then they send you the paperwork that they make out as they check it, and that it was okay, and they send you a copy of that and a letter letting you know, here's all the times that your property was checked.
I think that's what she's saying what they're doing.
And that's really nice.
And the goal, and the goal is one a day, at least, for each, because of the coverage we have.
Very, very good. Even just a drive-by with spotlight, I mean, anything helps.
Oh, yeah.
Especially if it's just snowed, you can see if there's footprints around.
Yep. Officer Church has been doing it religiously, reporting it, and it finally has another member on board as of yesterday, who didn't know they were supposed to do it, or that we even offered that service, so. Just another.
How is our chief?
He's, he said he's coming in tomorrow for an hour, he wants to talk, I don't know if his wife's probably driving him.
Okay.
And, uh, I don't want him to work, if he doesn't have a doctor's note, I'm gonna send him right home. But, I, I feel like we should talk about things and look at the future and what our plans are.
Okay.
I know on page nine, underneath, and it comes under sewer fund, and then we go down to administration, and we have building rental. So, and this, that ends up over on page nine, and it's like, our, uh, the total, it's a department of five forty.
Okay.
And it's like, third up from the bottom, twelve eighty-five, what is that, building rental?
Do you know what that is, questions? I, I don't know, I mean.
I don't know who you are, something you are.
I think it's a way for, like, the other departments to send some money back to the jungle.
Every, everything has a building rental in that, and the building rental is what we charge that account to be in our buildings.
Mm-hmm. Just like the computer, there's computer rental too.
So it's, it's just another way to.
It's a rental thing to all the departments.
A transfer, yeah, it's a way to transfer.
It's a way to get money.
Yeah.
It's a way to get money over to, um, jungle.
All right, okay.
Just like the hydrant rental and the computer rental.
Yeah, that's just the first that you've noticed it, but it's been all the way through there, uh, okay.
Yeah, that's the only reason we're keeping hydrant rental, or is just another line item, yeah.
Equipment rental is getting money from here into where he buys equipment. In a logical way, it's like they use that much equipment, therefore they have to, actually, the equipment rental is a real thing, there's a book that comes with it.
Yep.
You have to, he has to write down every time he uses a piece of equipment, and she has to calculate into how much it equals to, and then she has to charge it out.
Yearly schedule comes up, this is what the actual cost of a piece of equipment is.
This is what you charge for that piece of equipment.
Hence we bill it off to that department.
You know that, see, and here's your equipment fund, it has all the money.
Yeah, we fill our, we fill out our weekly timesheet, should put what we may use and what fund, Marguerite puts that in the fund, and that's how it gets billed out to each fund.
And if it gets too high, we say, stop it.
And that's when Don stops talking to me.
Yeah, yep, that's right.
Does he swear on his way out the other road?
We don't get that excited, we just, we make our point and we leave.
Well, I do have a question for Don, on the meters, where we do have, uh, total twelve thousand nine hundred thirty-six, how many new meters is that?
It depends what size you're buying and what.
Okay.
Our goal this year is we have, we're gonna concentrate on the large meters this year, there's been some, several large properties that have, the meters are really old, and that's your large income cut for the water department.
So are you, are you talking then not residential most?
Well, we, we're gonna still do residential, but our goal is to get a lot of the large meters replaced this year.
All right.
Cause that's where a lot of your income comes from, is your large meters.
Have we done anything with the radio red ones?
We have not yet.
With the walk ones?
The radio, radio.
Radio red, you just drive by.
Yeah, we gotta, well, you, yeah, you, you do, you still walk by, but it, you don't have to physically touch the pad, the goal is, we wanna do a couple, uh, of the streets that have a lot of beater pits. To speed up that process.
Like our street?
In the winter, that's really slows you down.
Is our street, is that or not?
It, it'll, you don't have near as many as some other streets, you're, yeah, there's some streets that are almost.
My, ours is down.
Right, but the whole, the street as a whole isn't all beater pits, there's certain neighborhoods that are almost all beater pits. In the summer, it's not too bad, but the winter like this, where you gotta chip ice and, like, now we got, takes two people, cause one guy's carrying a metal detector and the other one has a shovel and the rate, you know, it's, cause they're covered and buried up there.
That's actually all the questions I have, because they got that in.
I have a question. On the water revenues, and you got the water charges in and the water charges out, this is on page nine.
Yes.
Right down towards the bottom.
Yes.
Um, did we not increase the water rates?
We did.
How come it's only showing five thousand dollars?
Where are you seeing that?
Right here.
In the water fund?
There's this and there's the actual, and then we're projecting four hundred and one thousand, and we took in three hundred and ninety-six thousand two years ago. So where's the increase?
Oh, last year's a big difference from last year.
No, no, this year is only three quarters, don't count those.
Okay, all right, okay. All right.
Oh, yeah, the increase.
And I find it fascinating that.
Where's three ninety-six to four oh one?
I, I find it fascinating that these two match exactly. Um, the, only on the first page, where it tells you, it would be the amended amount from eighteen nineteen, and the original budget from nineteen twenty. And then the activity through now, so the amended budget and the original budget are exact. Is that how Matt did it, do you think?
I think so.
Okay, so then I'm, I'm still back to, so this is three ninety-six, where's our increase, at four oh one?
So, year to date, right now.
Yeah.
We are at three fifty-eight. So that's a significant increase.
Is that three quarters?
Yeah, we're, this is as of, uh, February twenty-ninth.
So it's as of our last water bill?
Is that three billing cycles or?
Yeah, so this is where we're at, so I think it's probably pretty close.
Well, yeah.
And that's also with, uh, John Kaser's numbers as well.
Well, that's, it doesn't make any sense to me, because three ninety-six was the original, I'm working to see what you called it, the amended budget and the original budget from eighteen nineteen and nineteen twenty was at three ninety-six. And so this year, you're saying we're down to three eighty-five?
Three fifty-eight.
Three fifty-eight?
As of.
So where did the three ninety-six come from, what is that?
I don't know.
But is that only three billing cycles or what, or?
No, the three billing cycles is two sixty-five.
Where are you seeing that?
Right here.
No, on the first, November.
Oh, I'm looking at the headings, the headings are only at the top of the first page.
Yeah, right here.
Correct.
To see what I'm looking at. Well, I'm looking at these numbers here, this would be the amended budget for nineteen nineteen.
Cause what's the next cycle?
This is amended.
They just went out on last week.
Third, new March twentieth, so the ten percent penalties and everything rolling the next fiscal year.
Amended, this is the original budget.
And so we don't have all the money, you know, this.
This is, um, three quarters of a year, and this is the projected budget. And I'm saying that between this, which is.
They don't line up with your fiscal quarter.
Yeah, they don't line up.
That's one problem, they don't line up with the fiscal quarter.
And now we're three quarters of a year, we've got this much, which makes sense, but between this and this, that's only five thousand dollars, there should be.
Yeah, water.
Where's our increase? But he's saying we didn't take in three hundred and ninety-six thousand dollars.
Not yet.
Not yet, it's possible, because.
No, but I mean.
Back in eighteen eighty.
And if we did, then why aren't we making more now?
Th- this is the, is this the first quarter that's the rate going in?
This is the first quarter of the rate change.
So you don't even show that.
Well, yeah, but you'd have to project it out through next year.
True.
You don't show that.
Did you project it?
I projected it based on municipal analytics numbers. But then again, we did change some things as well, to get in line with the ordinance. One ready to serve sewer, one ready to s- to serve water.
Yes, but it didn't, that didn't affect the water.
No, but, I'm, I mean, three fifty-eight to four oh one is, you know, another.
But I'm not looking at three fifty-eight, I'm looking at the three ninety-six from four to four oh one.
On last year.
What's that?
What's that?
Totals, look at the difference in totals.
Well, that's all these things added together.
No, I, I can't talk to what he budgeted revenue-wise, guesstimate-wise, whether he thought the rate increase would be sooner, later, I mean, it could have been all of those factors.
Well, I'm just gonna vote for, that's not right.
You want it to go higher?
I think it should have gone higher.
Okay, I will run numbers and.
Ask him, ask him why, or somebody, run some numbers, try, I'm trying to think how I. I don't know, I figured it every year, by the number of customers that we had, but you really can't do that either, it's.
Nope, because.
You gotta use the equivalent unit.
Do we have less? You do, and some people use more, and some people use less, so there's a whole bunch of numbers down there, and there's a whole bunch of. What percentage did we increase that, or didn't we, did we just play with the numbers?
I've heard ten percent for the next ten years.
That, that was, that was the average, but.
We were gonna vote on a knee here, always does.
Okay, now this is where I get really confused, I'm not good with decimals, but wouldn't ten percent of three hundred and ninety-six thousand dollars be thirty-nine thousand dollars?
About forty thousand.
Yeah.
Yeah. So how come it's only five?
Well, we can change that.
Anybody else? Am I the only one that's looking at it?
I went off the actual numbers and not on past budgets.
Anybody else see it?
Is there any, yes, does the billing register show the dollar amount generated from the bills?
Yes.
If you had that information.
Ten percent from here to there.
You're right.
But some of those people won't pay.
Part already knows what it almost is, right?
Right, but that would give you a guesstimate.
The water bills have been due and been paid, or are they still due right now?
They're still due.
They're still due.
They have until, they have.
The twentieth, the twentieth.
So then you have everybody that pays after.
Well, that would account for the difference between two sixty-five and three ninety-six.
So that's the actual cash that's been paid, not the.
Yeah, and that would make sense, to me.
Not the accrued, accrued rate.
No, this is, this is the cash that's been paid back to us, that's what we have.
So they're still outstanding.
There's a whole quarter outstanding out there. So, and that's fine, I don't, cause we didn't change the rates then, they're changed, well, they were changed now, they were changed this time.
This is the first.
So some of that increase, so I'll tell you what, if that goes up above three ninety-six, I'd be looking at it really close. Because that means it's gonna go up higher for all, for, all four quarters next year, and it's not gonna be just five thousand dollars.
No.
And it's not gonna make a, it's not gonna make a bigger, no.
No, that isn't a problem, right?
No, but it's good to have an idea of what you've got coming in, and we will, we will next year, we'll know what it's gonna be. But I just don't know where Hart got the number of four oh one, it was off somebody's paper, no, out of the air?
No, but.
And that was that Michigan analytics that Spicer did, right?
Yeah.
It was, it was through the, the spreadsheet from John.
Okay.
Four oh one, what did I?
Four oh one three forty is what's on here.
He had four oh one three thirty-nine.
Oh, yeah, well, that's fine. Where's sewer, what? Where's sewer?
Revenues.
And sewer budget, they estimated. Previous page. Close. What do we have for actual on that?
Well, I don't have any more questions.
Well.
Back here.
I can see where it could be a five thousand difference this year from last year, but next year's gonna be more.
Right, cause next year's gonna be the whole time.
It's gonna be all four quarters under the new rates, you're gonna make more money. And did we not change sewer very much, we just changed the way we charge it out?
And for sewer, uh, yearly actual is one fifty-three and I have one fifty-one in there with.
Yeah, and that's okay, and we just changed kind of the way we charged that, and we didn't change the rates too much, did we?
This year, it's not drastic.
Right, and then it starts to go the other way.
I think year five, it becomes a hundred percent increase or something like that.
Okay. So that one I understand, cause we just kinda rerouted the way we changed, we charged stuff.
It's more uniform to what the water.
Yeah.
Then the minimum bill went from one ten fourteen to one oh three seventy-three, so the people that just.
It actually went down?
Yeah, people were pretty happy with it.
For the five thousand dollar.
For the lower usage.
Yeah, because my bill, I thought mine was normally about one forty-six, it was one seventeen.
You know why it was lower?
I looked at.
There were thirteen less days on this reading than there were last time, cause I looked at our bill today, so there were thirteen.
Okay, they read earlier, or really. Yeah, it does.
Yeah, it does, you're thirteen days, you use more water, so you get charged more sewer.
Oh, that's right, so here, you get a readiness to serve per day also, in, in addition to your usage.
I would just be curious.
I, I'll, I'll watch some.
Yeah, remind me next year and I'll look at it.
Well, and we'll see, we'll see actual numbers versus projected.
It will, it'll, it'll show out, it's just, it's just not making sense in my head.
And, and, the, it's not the first time in this previous budget that the numbers are not close.
Well, I've noticed that, okay, I've noticed other ones.
And that's the other thing, yeah, that's the other thing that.
It was, um, plumped up quite a bit, um, yes, where I would have unplumped it, he plumped.
He, he was a big plumber.
Yeah. I agree.
Well, I think you've done a good job, and I think you feel like, probably feel like we grilled you, and it's just understanding what's going on.
Nobody's interested in the equipment part?
Well, we figured that that's gonna happen, right?
Well, have, have we determined that we're going to buy that thing? Did we determine that last time? Did we determine that last time?
We, we have not.
We budgeted, or we have not through it.
Right.
Okay.
It is, it is in there, using reserves from that account.
So we're demoing one as we speak, so I first know something, whether we will see, so. Yeah, we, we budgeted for, we have not.
Yeah.
I hope so.
It's supposed to snow like three days, on and off.
Yeah, it's, well, depends who you listen to, that's, they're all over the place.
It'll snow, I'm going on a small trip, it'll snow.
Yeah, the high was four to eight, now it's down to like you said, two to five or three to five, two to five, something like that.
No, thank you, looks like a good budget. Okay, I don't have any more questions.
If they grow and don't freeze, it won't stay anyway.
Do you know it?
I do know it.
Okay.
I'm gonna go get those evaluations for you guys.
Oh, okay.
Will you feel better now?
I, I do, it's just, I've been looking at the actual today, cause we've just put this out, and I'm like, oh boy. And then I'm like, what do they have, that's from two weeks ago, so I'm like, well, I could change those, but I'm like, that, that's not the version they have, so. The final version will still be a little bit.
So you guys are gonna have this ready for our approval at the margin.
Yes, I actually, yes.
The bottom line, this is a worksheet.
So.
And however it comes out at the end, you learn.
Everything is almost ready to go, the resolutions are done, we've projected out for.
Did you get the headly thing in?
Yep, it's, it's in. No loss of revenue there, that's huge for me.
I'll ask you after.
Okay.
I'm gonna keep things, Diane, do you need these papers? No, they're your, you've made copies for me? I think we understand it kind of.
Okay. And you're gonna add your many rates there, right?
He'll remember that.
I'll do a dance as soon as you guys all.
Yeah.
Right in there.
We'd like to see that, do it right now. Let it be known, some people would like it to be more.
You did hear that, right?
I didn't.
Some people would hope it to be more, but this is what we're gonna go with now, I, you know, for myself, I'm very happy, I'm always going to. Chris can tell you, you know, she and I had many little clashes in there, actually, but, um, overall, she was a wonderful manager, so. That's how I feel about you, doesn't mean that I won't be up here saying, where's my money for my planning commission to, to redo our offices. And my issues, you know, but, um, I think you're doing a great job, I really do.
Well, I'm happy to be here, I love being here, I want you to see value in what I'm doing or trying to do and.
I know it's been a nightmare, I mean, I don't know it, but I can imagine from, yeah, I can imagine that it was a nightmare.
Well, it's hard, it's really hard to.
Right, it is, it's very hard.
To come in and they don't like the person before you, what, is this being unrecorded now?
Not yet, no. We're, we're still in session, so we could adjourn.
Are there any other issues we need to take care of in this budget meeting? Do I hear a motion to?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll support.
All those in favor? Opposed, motion carried.